All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're back in regular session. And that concludes the business of the special meeting that started at 4:30 PM. That meeting is now adjourned. Now I'll call to order the regular board meeting, 5:30 PM, a little bit late tonight, um, November 7th. If you could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Presentation in the Colors by the Como High School Naval JRTC, followed by a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Dr. Aguilar, do you have opening comments tonight?
I do. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, tomorrow afternoon, the state will announce school and district performance scores. Preliminary indications are that the district's performance will increase under the new more rigorous accountability formula. Please know that recent changes to the school accountability system have reduced the amount of potential points awarded for basic by 20 points and mastery by 25 points. That is a total of 45 points that have been eliminated from the grading system. So I want you to expect that across the state of Louisiana, expect to see SPS scores and district performance scores that will be slightly less than you are accustomed to. That's just a manifestation of the new grading system. Staff is working on a press release that will be, that will recognize the many achievements of our schools. And there are quite a few schools that have done exceptionally well. Additionally, on November 16th, we will recognize principals and schools with accountability flags and banners, recognizing the hard work of our teachers and their students' successes. Uh, with that said, in addition to the performance scores for our K-12 schools, nine of our elementary, childhood, and learning centers have been rated as excellent by the state. This is the highest possible rating on the annual performance evaluation. This evaluation tool used nationally and internationally means, means that the sites on this list are among the best in the world. These schools include Broadmoor Elementary, Dusan, Evangelion, GT Linden, Live Oak, Middlebrook, Ridge, SJ Montgomery, and Woodvale Elementary Schools. Congratulations to all of those early childhood centers. Earlier this week, I sent to all teachers in the parish an email recognizing some of their concerns as it relates to their students and working conditions. I asked district leadership to reduce the number of PLCs and our grade level meetings being conducted in schools to no more than two per week to try to give back to teachers some, some very precious planning time. I also directed school-based instructional leaders to spend at least 80% of their time assisting teachers in the classroom. I want all teachers, all staff, to know that I appreciate their feedback. And wherever and whenever possible, we will address concerns that they bring to my attention. The goal here is to focus on students and classroom instruction. For example, I invited teachers, uh, also this week to serve a greater role in upcoming discussions regarding our 2019-2020 PPP document. So that will be starting sometime in January. We've asked for significantly more teachers to be involved in that committee work. School Board members, Section 709 of Bulletin 140 requires that each lead agency submit a coordinated funding request on behalf of their community network to the Louisiana Department of Education. Early childhood lead agencies are required to ensure that there is an opportunity for public comment on the coordinated funding request before submission of the coordinated funding request. You can, uh, access the opportunity to make comments on our LPSS website from November 12th through the 26th for public comments to be submitted to the lead agency. We want to wish the best of luck to three of our football programs who advanced to the playoffs. The number three ranked Acadian Rams will host Live Oak Friday night. The number 30 ranked Como Spartans will be on the road Friday playing Ruston High. And in 4A, the number 22 ranked Karen Crow Bears travel Friday to take on Assumption High School. Best of luck to all of those teams. And finally, I would like to extend my sincere congratulations to the Lafayette High School marching band. This past weekend, they competed in the Louisiana Showcase of marching bands where they placed first and were named state grand champions. What is amazing about this feat is that this is the 17th title for the band and 16th consecutive title as state grand champions for that program. In the next two weeks, you will be able to catch them marching in Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York City. I encourage everyone to tune into the parade on Thanksgiving Day and see one of the best high school marching bands in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Thank you.
You want to hang on? I was just asked, sir, thank you. Going to executive, uh, session, consideration in our action concerning pending litigation in the matter of Stacy Stevens versus Lafayette Parish School System, Docket 18-04311 in District 4 of the Office of Workers' Compensation.
We have a motion by Mr. Lachley, second by Mr. Hidalgo, to go into executive session on this matter, uh, Stacy Stevens versus Lafayette Parish School System. Do you have any public comment on us going into executive session for this matter? Any board member comment? Madam Secretary, I call for the vote. All in favor of going into executive session? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be back in a few minutes. Alright. Alright, boys.
President, I move we go back into regular session.
We have a motion to go back in regular session. Well, the second by Mr. Santani. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we are back in regular session.
So President, I make a motion that, uh, we, um, accept council's recommendation on the litigation we just discussed.
We have a mo-, uh, motion to accept council's recommendation on the matter of Stacy Stevens versus Lafayette Parish School System, Docket 1804311 in District 4 of the Office of the Workers' Compensation by Mr. Hidalgo, second by Mr. Santani. Any public comment on that recommendation? Any board member comment? Madam Secretary, I call for the vote. Vote should be up.
Seven, four, and then against.
Alright, motion carries. Mr. Hidalgo?
Mr. President, before we move forward, um, if I could have a moment of personal privilege, do we have Colin? Is Colin in here? Colin, if you're outside. No. Nope. Alright, great. Uh, while he's coming, uh, fellow board members, uh, public and certainly Dr. Aguilar, tonight we have a very special person here with us, Colin McGee. Colin McGee is a student at Milton Elementary. He happens to be in my wife's class. And tonight, if it's okay, Colin's going to be an honorary school board member with us. But before we do that, I would like to, yeah. Before you sit down, Colin, the superintendent, uh, and myself and the school board president would like to present you with an honorary school board member certificate. Take a picture and then this is going to be your seat for tonight, okay?
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move into our informational items. We are going to do one out of order. We're going to start with 3.3 LPSO SRO update. And we have Lieutenant John Mau from Lafayette Parish Sheriff's Office who's going to give an update on the School Resource Officer Program. Lieutenant?
How you doing? Thank you for having me. I'm Lieutenant John Mau with the Lafayette Sheriff's Office. Just kind of wanted to come over here, uh, for a few minutes to talk to you about. It's about a couple of updates. Uh, first and foremost, we, we have the fifth edition of our newsletter coming out. This is, uh, this is part of the SRO management program. We use the newsletter to inform faculty members throughout Lafayette Parish School System on, uh, trends involving students nationwide. Issues that, uh, that they can take, information they can take, implement at the school level. We talk to them, we use the newsletter to talk to them about different kinds of drugs, narcotics facing, facing schools, juveniles in the area, different kinds of crimes. I think we've ran some issues on sexting, cyber stalking, bullying, issues like that. So far, our feedback as a result of that program has been really po-, positive. I think our SROs have, uh, have been able to go throughout the schools, talk to different faculty members about that. And, uh, so far, all our, everything's been really positive on our end. If y'all have anything that you want to see improved, just let us know and, and we'll be sure to include that. One of the other major items coming up really soon is the release of the Lafayette Parish Student Protect App. This is a mobile application that's going to be available on Android and Apple phones. It's going to allow students, teachers, parents to be able to have latest information pertaining to their schools. Whenever somebody downloads the app, they'll, they'll have the ability to choose specific schools within the app. And then they'll only receive alerts pertaining to those schools. So you're going to see this, uh, hopefully come out and be available within the next week or so. And, uh, as part of that also, you're going to see the ability for students to be able to submit tips. So two of the key p-, features as part of that app is one, if there is a serious emergency, they can hit the alert button and immediately, uh, law enforcement's going to be notified that there's a serious incident happened at the school. Another key feature is the ability to report tips. So if they have students with concerns about fighting or bullying or any other kind of concern, somebody bringing a weapon into the school, they're going to be able to use that feature to report anonymous tips to law enforcement. And that's something we can respond to as, as we go forward. That's, uh, that's going to open the doorway for the third part, which is if you see something, say something campaign. We're gonna, we're gonna push that out along with the Student Protect App and, uh, try to encourage people to report any, any threats to us. That's really the only updates I have.
Alright, Lieutenant, thank you very much. Any, uh, board member, do you have any questions on? Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright.
Alright, next item will be, now, on the information items, just want to let everybody know, these items are items for board information, public information only. Um, these items are not for action tonight, so there will not be a time for public comment unless requested specifically by a board member for some other reason. Um, the next item on the agenda is consideration of a car rider line under construction at Alice Boucher Elementary. Mr. Bruce Art.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was contacted by a few parents concerned about the car rider line as Alice Boucher. And instead of, uh, taking that matter up in, in our committee meeting, we only had one agenda item. So I checked with Dr. Aguilar and asked to put it on our board meeting agenda to give them an opportunity to speak their concerns. So if you allow them a few minutes to voice their concern, I would appreciate it.
Fine with me. So do we have anybody here that wants to speak, uh, on the subject of consideration of a car rider line under construction at Alice Boucher Elementary? Alright.
Um, my name is Natalie Thomas. Um, I live in Gentile Park Subdivision, which is, uh, I stay on a corner lot and I have a dead end that the street backs up into. Alice Boucher, or whom the school board is now building a car rider line, they opened up the dead end. And that's where they are trying to get the cars to come into the neighborhood now. Um, I'm here to get information about the car rider line construction process because none of the community was aware. I have over half of the community's signatures stating that they were never notified, i.e. they don't want the car rider line because there was never any impact study, any feasibility studies, any safety studies done in my neighborhood. I am the adjacent home to the back fence. My house will be blocked in three ways with this one car rider line. Um, we also hadn't seen a proposal, public date, meeting. Um, the permitting process, where's the public hearing, the notice date to the residents, public hearing, meeting date, um, hearing examiner notice of action letter approving, granting the permit. We haven't gotten, received any of that. And the construction process is over 75% done, I would say, because I see it every day, every morning. Um, we hadn't got any advance notice, no meetings, no due process to express our concerns and our objections, no appeal rights. None of those procedures were pro-, were followed. Therefore, we feel we should not be, um, this project should not be permitted and we feel it should cease until, and when in compliance or abandoned for a better solution.
Thank you very much.
Ms., Ms. Thomas, are you speaking for the group of them?
Mr. Bruce Art, did you want Mr. Bordelone to address anything about the process?
Yeah, yes, I spoke to Mr. Bordelone some time ago about that. And let me apologize for, uh, for you not getting notice for that. We, we, I'll let Mr. Bordelone speak on that and then I'll make comments afterwards.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. Kyle Bordelone, Director of Planning and Facilities. Um, as you all know, most likely, we have a, uh, Alice Boucher has, is typical of most schools. We have a horrible traffic problem there with, uh, car riders trying to get in, mixing with the buses trying to get in and out. Uh, so some money was allocated by the board, uh, a while back for this project. Uh, we did meet with the city, uh, planning and zoning to make sure that we could tie into that street. There was no restriction with that street that does dead end into the fence line of the back of the Alice Boucher campus. So, uh, we made sure that we could do that. Um, along the way of getting this project in progress, uh, we found out that the, the property, uh, was not platted in accordance with the way city planning and zoning wanted it platted. So therefore, we had to go through the plating process, was it, which involves getting the property surveyed. It involves a public notice to everyone who lives within 300 feet, or any property owner who lives within 300 feet of the property. Uh, our engineer for the project has to get a, uh, a listing of the property owners from planning and zoning, who I assume gets it from the tax assessor's office. And letters have to be mailed out to all of those property owners of a hearing date of when the plating will come, come to, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, I mean, it's, it's during that time that those surrounding property owners get notified that there is something going on. We did have a, um, a sign that had to be posted in front of Alice Boucher because of the plating process. If, if anyone had any questions, they would call Planning and Zoning. And Planning and Zoning would have told them, yes, they're getting the property platted because they have a project that's coming up. Um, and, and I'm sure if they, if they did know what the project was, they would have told them. If they wouldn't have, they would have said, call the school board office to find out. Um, so we are tying into a public street. Uh, we do have permission from planning and zoning and traffic to do this. And by doing so, we're going to take a lot of traffic off of Martin Luther King and off of Patterson, uh, so that when those, when the parents come in to drop their, their kids off, they will be out of those, those major thoroughfares. Uh, and it goes pretty quick. All the other schools that we have, uh, a, a good car rider line, uh, the traffic increases for about, uh, 20 minutes, maybe 30 minutes in the morning. Same thing in the afternoon. It flows through pretty quick. We do have a pretty long line, uh, on stacked up on, to stack up cars on our site. I believe we can stack up somewhere in the neighborhood of 90. I think it's 90 cars on our site. So, uh, hopefully, uh, those cars that do come in to pick up their children, they will all stack up on the site and not onto any of the, uh, surrounding streets.
Mr. Angel? Yes, sir. From Mr. Bruce Art.
We will not be in violation if we allow the cars to be on Alice Boucher's site prior to dismissal?
No, sir. Mr. Angel?
Thank you. First of all, ma'am, I'd like to thank you for speaking for the group as opposed to bringing 50 people and everybody saying the same thing. I really appreciate that. And, and I, I, uh, I sympathize with you. My, 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 my question is, and, and I think that Kyle is correct, that, uh, the, the zoning and planning commission is charged with letting people such as her and her neighbors know what's going on. Does she live less than the 300 feet or? How did she, how? Will the proper permits issued?
Yes, sir. Our, our contractor applied to, uh, the permitting department and they do have construction permits, yes, sir.
Do they have evidence that they sent these people notices? Are they, are they registered letters or?
Uh, again, our engineer gets a list of the people who live within 300 feet from planning and zoning and they send out the letters notifying them of the hearing or the, the, the plating process when it was coming up. Um, I, I don't have a list of who received, or who was mailed out letters. I don't have that list, but, but the letters were sent out. That's a requirement.
Mr., Mr. Bordelone, Mr. Bordelone. Uh, it's our engineer, I want to make sure I understand the process. Our engineer that we hire is responsible to do the due diligence and send those letters out, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding. And we get that, that mailing list from the city parish.
It sounds like it's possible, right? That may, may not have happened as effectively as it should have. So could you, so that we, we're not going to debate this tonight, this is not a court of law. Um, it does seem like there's an issue with maybe the city of planning, zoning, or there's an issue somewhere. So can you, uh, maybe seek some confirmation or proof? Or figure out who they sent letters to, what addresses, when they sent them and that?
Not a problem.
And then, uh, maybe follow up, exchange information, uh, with Ms. Thomas?
Not a problem.
Try to resolve that. And then maybe help, uh, have a meeting over at LCG and figure out what did or didn't happen and what we can do to mitigate it?
Okay.
Alright. Any other, Mr. Bruce Art?
Changing. Yes, I, I, the, uh, the sign, I think the sign was posted by the replating. When you're, when you don't change zoning from residential, commercial, commercial, or residence, the sign hasn't, doesn't necessarily have to be posted. But the padding sign was posted somewhere on Alice Boucher Lot. I don't know if, if every protocol was followed. But I thank you for the excellent Bordelone to follow up on it and to, uh, work with Ms. Thomas and the resident to assure them that their safety is our concern. And we are going to try to reset the cost in to the school to eliminate the problems of blocking the driveway and trying to ease some of the, some of the concerns that you have. And to get with her, if possible, to give her some of the, some of the permits that was applied for and, and received and, uh, and approved. But I, 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 I need to say, it's a good problem to have because, you know, having that many students at Alice Boucher in my, in my district, it's a good blessing. It's say, it speaks volume for the staff and the administration is doing a good job that the parents would drive from all over the parish to Lafayette to be part of Alice Boucher. So it's a good problem to have, but we're going to work with you as much as we can to solve the problem. And my phone line is always open.
Dr. Chessa?
Yeah, real quick, Kyle, uh, based upon what Ms. Thomas said, uh, because she and I spoke initially, the first time she called, I know her, that's my family. Um, the public notice. So just a list of questions, I don't care who takes them down or like, that I would like answered. Because to my thorough understanding about this, that those letters were sent out, but nobody in the neighborhood has gotten a letter. Is that right? Nobody's gotten a letter, okay. So, um, let me start with number one. Is, is there a sign up at Boucher? My kid goes to school there. I haven't seen the sign. Maybe I'm missing it. Oh, well, not necessarily.
Yeah, yeah, the, the process is to put a plating sign up.
Right.
But being part of boarding, uh, zoning and boarding for, uh, zoning in, uh, but you don't have to put a sign if you don't change anything.
If you don't change it, okay.
And nothing was changed other than the parking lot on Alice Boucher Lot. Not to say that they were right for not notifying the resident, they could have done that out of courtesy. But you were not changed from residential to commercial, commercial, or residential. So a si-, a sign was not needed.
Well, I'm not even necessarily concerned about the, the courtesy. I'm just concerned about the protocol because in the protocol is the actual courtesy. So I'm trying to figure out if the protocol was followed. So number one, is there or is there not supposed to be a sign? Not necessarily your question, but I'd like that answered. Because I know since we, it's, since it wasn't platted, but we had it, we had it platted. Should there have been a sign which would then notify residents of possible changes? Number two, let me scratch that out, I don't want to miss anything. So sign. Number two, who, same question that Mr. Kinesi had, or Kinesi, sorry, Eric. Um, the public notice, uh, this letter that's supposed to go out, who handles it? Either our engineer or someone from planning and zoning. And since planning and zoning doesn't seem to know, uh, if the letter was indeed sent out, it seems like, sounds like that's our engineer. So was it sent out certified mail? And was it actually sent out? Because then that's a problem. Because if the folks in that neighborhood would have had an opportunity to know it's coming. Well, obviously they knew it's coming when they saw the construction starting. But if they, if, if you know something's coming, then you have a chance to go and sit at the meetings, just like we were in my neighborhood when they were going to build some additions, you're able to go sit and voice your concern. So the public notice part, the, the letter sent out. Um, Ms. Charles Claire, would you, would you mind finding out for Mr. Fred? How many cars indeed actually do pull up? I'm sure Mr. Fred might have a, a random idea, but if not, he can just count them tomorrow morning as far as how many cars are coming in, in the morning about give or take. I know we can have an outlier number here and there, but, uh, hundred? Yeah, I'd like to know morning and afternoon, uh, who handles the letters, who sends those out? And, uh, and then for anybody that's here, I know we, we desperately need a car rider line over there. We, we pull up on the sidewalk. As everybody knows, we drive up on the sidewalk there. Like I know we're not supposed to do it. We pull up, everybody turns in on the sidewalk, you're on dirt gravel, you drive off the road, they don't want you on the road. We're literally blo- blocking traffic. There were three options Kyle for, uh, for, for the car rider. There were three options.
I think there were four.
There were four options for the car rider line and three of them weren't viable based upon looping them in and looping them back out and then one crossing over based upon traffic going one way and then traffic going another way. So the same car rider line coming in that indeed loops around the school and then pulls you back out of the same way. So cars trying to turn in one way and, excuse me, in one way and in one way. And then cars coming out also trying to turn out one way and out the other way. It was, we didn't get, we didn't get approval for it, but I understand what she's saying. I, I personally would not want, if I know I live on a dead end, I know we need it. But also if it, we need to make sure that everybody's public rights to understanding what was taking place and what was coming, that at least that was afforded. I don't know if that stops the process or halts it, but I'd at least like to find out for sure if indeed, because I literally got on the phone and had a phone conversation and the exact thing I was told was letters were sent out to every single person that lived within that three hundred yards or three hundred feet?
I think it's three hundred.
Three hundred feet. And to speak to the immediate person who I know, cause I'm at holidays with her. She's at my house, I'm at her house, to know that she didn't get the letter. Let me know that either letters weren't sent out or something, something broke down at that point. So if we could find that out, I'd appreciate it. And then if we could get that reported back to the board with an information item like ASAP or at least a phone call to me so I can relay to her, so she can relay to everybody what's going on. So we can start to understand this process a whole lot better. Cause I, she, I literally spoke to her and explained to her, yeah, letters were sent out. And her exact thing back to me was, we didn't get a letter. But, but the letters was met, but the letters were sent out though. I was told the letters were sent out, but we didn't get a letter. So if we could find that out, I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda, three point two, recognition of Lafayette Parish School System as a national reference site by the Scientific Learning Corporation.
Hello, my name is Cory Arms and I'm representing Scientific Learning tonight. And we have a partnership with districts across the country and Canada that do a great job implementing the fast forward and reading assistant products. And we honor these districts, specific districts that do exemplary work as, by naming them as a national reference sites. And so tonight I would like to recognize and express my appreciation to the board, to Dr. Aguilar, to the team, the principals, the coaches, Crystal Moses, the people that have really worked to make Lafayette such a great success with their students. I'd like to thank Colin, I meant to include you. I apologize for getting to include you in that. So I have a plaque naming Lafayette Parish School System as a national reference site. And we have a banner that we'd like to present as well.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, three point four, recognition of Dawn Stelly, LPSS State Elementary Counselor of the Year.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do Ms. Stelly. She's our counselor at Ridge. Uh, Lafayette Parish School Counselor Dawn Stelly was recently selected for three awards. Dawn was chosen as Lafayette Elementary Counselor of the Year. Then she advanced in competition to become the State Elementary Counselor of the Year at the LCA Conference in Baton Rouge. Since Dawn scored the highest in all high school, middle school and elementary school competition, she was additionally awarded a trip to Washington DC in January two thousand nineteen, where she will be, where she will represent and advocate for all school counselors from the state of Louisiana. Dawn received her Bachelor of Science degree in teaching and her Master's degree in counseling at the University of Louisiana at Lafayette. She has been at Ridge Elementary School for the past seven years where she emulates the American School Counselor's National Model as she assists students in pre-K through second grade with varying academic, personal and social needs as well as her career interests. She continually leads individual and small group counseling sessions, presents classroom guidance lessons, consults with teachers, administrators and parents in meetings that need, in meeting the needs of all students. In two thousand sixteen, after the flooding that occurred in our area, Dawn spearheaded a collaborative effort between Ridge Elementary School and the community of families who needed food, bottled water, cleaning supplies, diapers, baby food, uniforms and school supply. Dawn was also instrumental in implementing a program that promotes anti-bullying, strategies by encouraging students to exemplify self-discipline and show respect for others. Additionally, each year Dawn hosts an annual career fair where all students are encouraged to dress in career of their choice. On that day, community representatives from different careers visit the school and have presentations on what their occupation involves. Dawn Stelly continues to be an integral part of Ridge, Ridge Elementary School and the Lafayette Parish Counseling Program with fidelity. Her greatest leadership and advocacy achievements have been her continuous rapport with students as she encourages good behaviors while giving the students her time and attention. For she knows that her students can make smart choices and she knows that they can succeed, not only in the school environment, but in outside world as well. This Dawn Stelly, Ridge Elementary.
Uh, Mr. President, I will, uh, read the recognition of Brittany Pecor, LPSS State Middle School Counselor of the Year. Did I pronounce that correctly? It's all right. I'm sensitive because no one pronounces my name correctly. Lafayette Parish's Middle School Counselor of the Year Brittany Pecor advanced to the state competition at the LCA Conference in Baton Rouge where she was named the State Middle School Counselor of the Year. Brittany received her Bachelor of Science degree in psychology and her Master's degree in counselor education from the University of Louisiana at Lafayette. She has been at Egberton Middle School for four years where she implemented a comprehensive counseling program with a team of stakeholders to create a caring and supportive climate that is endorsed by the ASCA National School Counseling Model. While Brittany developed a data-driven improvement plan called A Measure at her school, she helped students reach their goals in the accelerated reader program by tracking the students' different reading levels, which helps in the decision-making process for implementing accommodations for struggling readers. During Brittany's involvement at Egberton Middle School, she established a process in Google for all stakeholders to use when referring students so the data could be reviewed quickly and she could advocate for the needs of students. In addition to this real-time referral system, it allows Brittany the ability to formulate the guidance lessons in small groups based on the needs of the school, such as revolving conflicts peacefully. As students needed to channel their energy and attention, Brittany developed a safe place for students to gather during lunch on Fridays to focus on finding a solution to issues. Brittany and the students watched TED Talks on the benefits of kindness and participated in RAC, R-A-K, Random Acts of Kindness Bingo, as the students learned how to create their own RAC cards to pass out at school. After the tragedy in Florida, Brittany decided to have a school-wide RAC challenge for students and teachers. The students' responses were shared in the morning announcements so everyone could feel like a family and be connected to something special at their school. Brittany frequently advocates for the counseling profession by presenting data that she collects over the previous year and shares with the stakeholders at open house, parent night, or school in services throughout the year. Brittany is an exemplary role model for our students, teachers and parents as she continually informs the community about the ever-changing role of school counselors in the twenty-first century. Congratulations, Brittany.
Next item on the agenda, three point six, administrative guidelines for business service division, purchasing schedule, bidding requirements and purchasing payment. Dr. Aguilar?
It's actually Mr. Gidry.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes, uh, the changes that are reflected, uh, reflect, uh, recent revisions, uh, to the, uh, federal guidelines, uh, more specifically. Uh, for our small purchases, the threshold requiring three quotes has gone from thirty-five hundred to ten thousand. Uh, and, uh, with regards to, uh, professional services, the quoting requirements have increased from a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. So these guidelines are changing to reflect those changes in the federal guidelines. And, and also, uh, I would call your attention, uh, it, I don't, the way the guidelines are set up, uh, it, the strictest application is the one that applies. So you have various quote requirements and bid requirements for federal purposes, state purposes. And then you also have, uh, local requirements that's included in our policies. So basically, uh, you, we apply the, the strictest requirements. So in, in our efforts to, to try to keep it as simple as or easy to follow as possible, uh, with the change in the federal guidelines for professional services from one fifty to two fifty, uh, we've also included that change, uh, locally. So that, uh, it would match and to try, again, to try to simplify it, uh, and make it easier to follow. So I just wanted to call the board's attention to, uh, that, that change as well and ask if there are any questions.
No, sir. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, update on HVAC maintenance contract. Mr. Bordalong, I assume?
I have a question for him whenever he comes up.
Mr. Bordalong, we're asking about the HVAC maintenance contract.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, good evening, members of the board. Kyle Bordalong, again, Director of Planning and Facilities. Um, the information item, uh, that you have on the HVAC maintenance contract is purely a maintenance, uh, excuse me, a, uh, information item. Uh, just to let you know how the first five years of the contract worked out. Um, in, in the, uh, contract, there was a potential for a fifty-fifty savings split if, uh, if the contractor was able to perform the work and bring it in less than the guaranteed maximum price. However, uh, contractor has demonstrated to us through, uh, his accounting reports that he actually spent, uh, more per the terms of the contract than the guaranteed maximum price, but because we had a guaranteed maximum price, that is the cap of, of the payments. Um, so it was just, uh, if any of you remember back that far, remember the fifty-fifty potential savings split, wanted to report back to you that because of that, there will be no fifty-fifty savings split.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Argel?
Um, Mr. Bordalong, when, I do remember five years ago. In fact, you can cut me off if you want, Mr. President, because I'm, I'm the only board member that voted no, if you recall. I, I would like to know if any other companies who do this kind of work were provided the same information that was provided to Mr., to this company, uh, so that we could have had some kind of competitive bid or the like.
When we put out the RFP, all of the companies were, had the same information. And they all had the opportunity to, uh, provide us with a proposal. And, and that's what all, there was, I remember there were three proposals that came in. Uh, all three proposals were assessed by the committee. Uh, the committee, uh, liked the proposal better from Bernhard Mechanical. And that was a proposal that was rec- recommended to the superintendent at the time and the board. And that's the one that ultimately was approved.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGee?
Um, who is responsible for changing, uh, the air filters in classrooms?
Bernhard Mechanical Contractors.
Okay.
The, the air filters are changed on a quarterly basis. Um, and if, if some conditions would come up that the air filters get dirty earlier, they can contact the principal who can put in a work order through the work order system. And, uh, we'll contact Bernhard about that.
Thank you, Mr. Bordalong. Next item on the agenda, personnel changes for November seventh, twenty eighteen. As I understand it, we don't have any introductions tonight. So, uh, board members, that information is there for your information if anyone has a question. All right. Next item on the agenda, uh, three point nine, LPSS Policy EFAA. It's, um, excuse me. Uh, employee use of social media draft oh six oh eight seventeen. Uh, just to clarify, Dr. Aguilar, as I understand it, this is a draft policy. The reason it is on the agenda tonight is to solicit input from employees and the public and the board. The proper time for comments on this item is not here tonight. The floor is not open for comment tonight on this item. Um, the policy is there. You can access it on our website. You can also contact staff or a board member to get you a copy. Um, at this point, we are soliciting public and employee comment on the item. Uh, and again, if you have comments on that item, you can contact one of us, your board members or one of the senior staff or, or a principal or whoever you normally talk to or feel comfortable talking to to give feedback to the school system. At some point, um, this policy will be reviewed by one of the committees on the board. After it's edited by the staff, it will be discussed in public at that time. You can further give comment at that time. Then the, the committee will make edits, send a draft to this board. And then again, at that And then again, at that time, we'll have opportunity for public comment on the item. With that, Dr. Aguilar, or board members, does anybody else have any comment on this item? Alright. Next item on the agenda, 3.10 BO Elementary Grade Level Configuration.
Board members, we are in the midst of building BO Elementary School. And we need to make a couple of important decisions and make them final so that we can begin staffing the school correctly. So one of the things that we have left unresolved is the actual school zone for BO Elementary School. So the staff has worked on a number of ideas that have come forward. One of them is that BO Elementary School would have a separate attendance zone. And our demographer, Mike Hefner, has proposed an appropriate attendance zone if BO is a kindergarten through fifth grade traditional elementary school. We've had one other idea also about pairing BO Elementary School with Drexel Elementary. Drexel would presumably be the early childhood school, pre-k through second grade. BO Elementary would serve the upper elementary students, grades three, four, and five. So that's an idea that's been proposed. There is a map that's been shown as well as that. And we are also working on the idea of a more global rezoning of the elementary schools in South Lafayette. I would welcome any parent, any constituent to contact my office if you have any thoughts about. Grade configuration for BO Elementary School and also for Drexel Elementary School.
Great. And you bring up a good point, Dr. Aguilar, and I do want to put this out there for the public, especially those that live in the proximity. Of these, of this new school. When we put a new school, when we open a new school, we have to zone children for that school. Because of that, there is a ripple effect that affects all zones in that area. It could affect all zones in the parish. So even though you may have bought your house for whatever reason in whatever zone. I put it out there, we changed the policy several years ago to force the board to rezone every three years. But also anytime we have a new school come into effect, we have to look at zoning. So I do want to make sure that everybody out there is aware that there will be a rezoning when this school is implemented. Mr. Hidalgo?
Mr. President, I just wanted to mention that I did receive from Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Craig, and staff today. Large-size maps of the proposed zone for BO Elementary. Or BO Middle, whatever it's going to be, the elementary middle. And I will be calling and holding several town hall meetings in and around the affected areas. I'll try to do them in, at different schools, so it gives plenty of opportunity. I'll have at least three, maybe more, town halls in the near future. To discuss not just the BO zone and the Catherine-Drexel zone. But the potential ripple effect that you mentioned in the area as well. So be on the lookout for town hall meetings in and around those areas.
And if you can't attend one of Mr. Hidalgo's town hall meetings. This board, at the time that we adopt the new zones and the zone changes. Will have another public meeting where you can come in and express your concern. I do caution you though, and I speak to the public on this. If you have a concern, please bring it up now because if it goes many months of many town hall meetings, maybe potentially committee meetings. We have demographers, we don't just draw the zones, we have a demographer that helps us draw the zones. And we get to the night of the board meeting where we're there to approve it. Drastic changes are not going to happen that night. It's just not likely. So if you want to make changes, make incremental changes and input, I recommend that you do that as early as possible. Next item on the agenda, is there any other comment on this item? Next item on the agenda is Youngsville and Broussard Middle School Spot Rezone. Dr. Aguilar?
The same remarks hold true for middle schools in the sense that. We have the potential with classroom space available to really move our fifth graders off of middle school campuses. Youngsville Middle houses grades five through eight, as well as Broussard, five through eight. Potentially, we have the ability with the proper zoning ideas that we have in mind. That we could put all fifth graders on elementary campuses. So over the next month, we will be looking at that with Mike Hefner and looking at zones. And the same holds true, Mr. Hidalgo will be visiting in the communities. Anybody has any comments about fifth graders on middle school campuses, any ideas about that? It'd be a good time to mention that to my office or Mr. Hidalgo or any board member.
Mr. President, I would like to add as well that the reason for the town hall certainly is for public input. This is actually, just like Mr. Broussard mentioned earlier, this is a great problem to have, right? We're opening a new school and we're creating capacity. Moving fifth grade off of the Youngsville campus is not just about moving fifth grade onto an elementary school campus. It's about the capacity or the lack thereof on that campus. They are, once again, as they have been. Every year for the past probably five years. They have absolutely no room left. We've got some classrooms that have thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two kids. They started the school year off with a couple of classrooms with forty-four kids. So the point of this is going to be to discuss moving fifth grade. With that, you're going to have some ripple effect depending on where you move the fifth grade. And so again, these public meetings are to discuss and get input from the public so that once we get to that moment of voting. We can move forward and everyone has plenty enough time before next school year to get acclimated to the change.
Thank you. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the informational items on the agenda. I do have two brief items before we get to the consent agenda. Veterans Day is approaching. I want to take a few moments to recognize fellow veterans. Mr. Lachele, Mr. Angel on the board. And all those veterans that might be in the room tonight, all those that work for LPSS. Appreciate your service. Thank you very much. Secondly. I would like to hear a little bit more about Mr. McGee and his story. So could you tell us a little bit about you?
My name is Colin McGee. I go to Milton Elementary and Middle School. My homeroom teacher is Mr. Hidalgo's wife, so. My favorite teacher out of the whole, whole grade.
So politician too.
Acting like a politician already.
However, on July 11th, 2018, I was diagnosed with stage-two Wilms tumor, kidney cancer. So I've been undergoing chemo for the past three or four months. This Monday, I had my second-to-last treatment, so I have one more after this next month. I have blood work for two weeks and then my last, my last one. It's been stressful, but. Overall, it's been. Okay, I've met some good people and I'm here, so. I also want to point out, I believe Mr. Santani's daughter is in my gifted class. So just want to point that out.
I'd like to, I'd like to point out that Mr. McGee pronounced my name correctly. Well done, son. Well done.
That's right. Well, Mr. McGee, welcome up here and thank you for your courage and we wish you well.
The way the name drop there, buddy, that's how you do it when you're a prophet. You drop the names you gotta drop. Do me a favor. Don't work for political office in District Five, okay?
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, now we're into the meat of the agenda, the consent agenda. I'm going to read the items off and ask fellow board members to tell me which items they'd like to pull for discussion. The items that are not pulled for discussion and at the end of the conversation over this, we'll vote on those items. And I'll make sure that you have an opportunity to discuss those items at that point. First item on the agenda, 4.1 District Calendars 2018-2019 and 2019-2020.
Pull that, please.
Pull that item, please, Mr. President.
Alright, Mr. McGee, I will pull that item for you. You gotta be quick. 4.2 Professional Development School Administrators. 4.3 Approval of Quotes for Acadia High Walkway Covers. 4.4 Declaration of Surplus Property at S.J. Montgomery Elementary School. 4.5 Budget to Actual Reports 2018. 4.6 Approval of Construction Manager Risk Delivery Method for Full Classroom Wings. Wing additions projects, wing addition projects. 4.7 Approval of Architect for Scott Middle Cafeteria Replacement Project. 4.8 Resolution 11181944 Preliminary Approval of the Issuance of $25 Million in Sales Tax Revenue Bonds and Appointment of Municipal Advisor.
Pull that, please.
4.9 Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with Lafayette Consolidated Government Concerning Sheltered Bus Stops. 4.10 Sales Tax Collection Report for September 2018. 4.11 Approved Bid Award Fourth Grade Tier One Science Materials Bid Number 4519. 4.12 Grant Fund Summary October 2018. 4.13 Reject Bid Award Library Periodicals Bid Number 2819. 4.14 Bond List Project, sorry, Bond Project Listing for Series 2019 Sales Tax Revenue Bonds. I would like to, well, someone to pull that for me. 4.14.
I will pull 4.14, I guess.
Thank you.
Please.
4.15 Resolution 11181946 Industrial Tax Exemption Application 20161904 ITE Staller Inc.
Pull that, please.
4.16 Resolution 11181947 Industrial Tax Exemption Application 20170287 ITE Advanced Product and Systems Inc.
Pull that one, please.
4.17 Budget Revision to Increase Instructional Appeal Slots. 4.18 Moss Elementary School Staffing. 4.19 Graduation Coach Job Description. 4.20 BO Elementary School Staffing. 4.21 Policy GBK Employee Discipline. 4.22 Approval Minutes. 4.23 Approval of All Action Consent Items.
Mr. Kenezak, would you consider pulling item 4.21?
4.21 is a policy GBK. At this time, I'd like to get a motion to approve all action consent items not pulled. Got a motion from Mr. Angel. Second by Mr. Santani to approve the items on the consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, this would be the time to speak on any of, any motion, I'm sorry, any item that was not pulled. I'm going to review the ones that were pulled, so if I don't call this, we're about to vote on the items that were not pulled. So the items that were pulled that will be discussed in a few more minutes are 4.1, 4.8, 4.14, 4.15, 4.16, and 4.21. So if I didn't list a number just now, we're about to vote on those items. And I'll go, I'll repeat it again, 4.1, 4.8, 4.14, 15, and 16, and 21. At this time, I'm opening for a public comment on the items that were not pulled on the consent agenda. There's no public comment on the consent agenda items. Any board member comment on the consent agenda items? Madam Secretary, I call for the vote. While we're waiting for the vote, I'd like to make a quick announcement. There's going to be a Veterans Day Celebration Program Sunday, November 11th, 2018 at 10:00 a.m. At the Progressive Baptist Church in Lafayette with Pastor Lloyd Joyner. The Como High School Naval Junior ROTC participates in the program. The guest speaker that morning is Lieutenant General Willie Williams, United States Marine Corps retired. And again, if you'd like to attend that event, it's a Veterans Day Program Sunday, November 11th at 10:00 a.m. at the Progressive Baptist Church. And the guest speaker will be Lieutenant General William Williams, United States Marine Corps retired. Alright, the. Thank you. Motion passes for the consent agenda. Next item would be 4.1, the first item pulled, District Calendars 2018-2019-2019-2020, Mr. McGee?
I pulled this item to allow, to allow staff to explain details.
Alright, Mr. McGee would like staff to explain the details of the calendar, Dr. Aguilar. Yes, we need a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the board revise the 2018-2019 and 2019-2020 district calendars so that the district will not schedule half-day in services and direct the superintendent to present one or more alternative 2019-2020 district calendars. Whereby the first day of school is no earlier than August 19th.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Santani.
Second.
The second by Mr. Lachele. For a really long motion that will be typed out and we'll discuss.
I'll explain, I'll explain what I just asked for.
Okay.
This is in fact asking the board to approve what the superintendent has asked us to approve. But come back in the future with one or more alternative calendars. That would have the first day of school no earlier than August 19th for consideration. I have gotten feedback that I think probably most of you have, that we start school too early. I tend to agree. Not only for. Nostalgia of maybe from when I was a kid and we started a little later, but also heating and cooling. Particularly cooling on August 7th.
Let me, let me open it up to public comment. So ladies and gentlemen, the motion by Mr. Santani, second by Mr. Lachele, is that the board revise the 2018-19 and 2019-2020 district calendars. So that the district will not schedule half-day in services. And we will direct the superintendent to present one or more alternative 2019-2020 district calendars whereby the first day of school is no earlier than August 19th. So at this time, if you have any comments on the 2019-2020 calendar. This potential revision or anything related to the calendar that has been posted or the calendar, the school calendar at all, please come up now. Alright. Alright. It appears we have no public comment on the calendar. Okay, any board member comment on the calendar? Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes, if it's, if it's okay with my fellow board members, Dr. Aguilar, as we've discussed several times in the past. I would definitely like to see a calendar that has the start of school no earlier than August 19th, but as close to Labor Day as possible.
Okay, any other board, Mr. Santani?
And I would encourage staff to, maybe this, given the constraints that we're forced to work under with instructional minutes and everything that we must do. When state testing occurs, all that stuff, maybe it's not possible or maybe it's just a little too tight. Be creative. You know, we can go to school on Thursday and Friday of Mardi Gras. We don't have to have the whole week off. We can go to school a couple of different times when we maybe have entire week holidays. So be creative, let's, let's have as much time during the summer as possible. Let's have, start as a little bit later than we normally do. Let's see what it looks like. Maybe that, maybe it's not possible, maybe it doesn't make sense for us, but let's, it'd be, it behooves us to take a look. I think.
Mr. President, if I could just poke something right in.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Mr. Santani, I just want to make sure that you realize that your statements you just made are recorded on video. I'm hoping my wife hears them.
Thank you.
Dr. Aguilar, are you under any time constraints for getting back to the board and getting it approved?
I don't think so. This is just an exercise in trying to get the number of minutes, instructional minutes in. We've got to, we're going to have to be creative and we're up to the challenge. We'll have something back to you guys for the December board meeting.
Are you going to solicit, I'll get to you a second, are you going to solicit comment, committee, what's your plan to gather input for this?
Once again, I would welcome any suggestions anybody would have. It's really a committee that sits down and looks at the mechanics of, we've got to have certain number of instructional minutes. Jonathan Cole is in the audience. We'll reach out to our teacher groups. We've got people in the central office. We'll try to meet together and map this out and show you what it would look like.
Okay, so this is just an announcement. Okay, so, uh, this is just an announcement to staff and parents alike. If you have any comments or any, this is happening now, right? We just started it now and it's going to happen and it's gonna happen in this building, it's gonna happen at the school sites. If you have feedback, please contact a board member. If you have feedback, please contact the principal. Please contact, if you're an employee, uh, one of your representatives, uh, we have several different teacher organizations. Please give us comment now so that we reach some sort of mutually agreeable calendar. Mr. Lachley.
Just to kinda give you an idea of some of the, the statements that are being made, whether via email or, or phone call, um, some teachers have recommended getting rid of fall break, uh, less days for Mardi Gras, just working things a little differently. I think a hundred and eighty days is a hundred and eighty days. I don't know how you get to a hundred and eighty, but whatever pattern you wanna use to get to a hundred and eighty instructional days. And these are recommendations coming from teachers to cut down on some of the holidays we have. So if, if that is done in the future, let it know, it, it's not necessarily coming from the board. We're listening to what you have to say and just so staff knows, so that, that's some of the things that we've heard. Um, maybe combining some of the in-services, not having so many in-services, making them more productive. Uh, but I just wanted to get that out, that, that's one of the conversations I had was to, was to get rid of some of the breaks and some, some amount of time off and, uh, I don't wanna say shorten the school year, but compact the hundred and eighty days and least amount of days as possible. Thank you.
I just point out that there is a copy of the nineteen-twenty district calendar attached to this agenda item, so if anybody wants a copy of it, you wanna print it out, you wanna mark it up at home, put red X's through the days that we can go back to school and, or whatever you want, whatever you wanna suggest. It's out there for you to make suggestions, please do.
I have a question, Mr. McGee, if you don't mind giving us some comment. What do you think about having a longer summer but shorter breaks during the year? So, so shorter fall break, maybe shorter Mardi Gras, but you have a longer summer. You, is that something you would be interested in, not? Cause you're in a, you're in the heat of it.
Yeah, yeah, totally, no pressure. I, I li- I like the idea of a, a longer summer, but the part of shorter holiday breaks, I feel like that's kind of when we need them, like right in the middle of the school year. Like when we're, when we're in the middle of school, we're like, oh, finally, we get a break. We're looking forward to those weeks off we have at school. Like you can ask just about all of my friends, they would agree with me. Um, so, I, I'm kinda in between.
So again, I encourage the students to tell your parents, to tell the principals, tell the teachers. Please get that feedback back to staff.
I recommend you come to that December board meeting.
Yeah.
I'm gonna try and make it to as many as I can, so.
I, I will let you know though, as a good politician, you did skirt the question, you didn't laugh it. You stayed on both sides, buddy.
I used to not be into politics, but then again, this is relating to school and I like school.
There you go.
Alright, do we have any other board member comment on this item?
Oh, also just a, real quick, a quick side note, but it goes along with that. Um, if anyone does end up scheduling vacation time and whatnot, most vacation rental properties tend to drop right after August eighth as well, yeah, as a heads up. So like literally, if you go from the first through the eighth for a week, it can be so many thousands of dollars, starting right after the eighth, it, it drops in half. So it's a good time to take a vacation as well.
Alright, Madam Secretary, I wanna call for a voice vote so Mr. McGee can participate. So all in favor of this motion, please respond by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I'm not opposed.
Motion passes, yeah.
Confused.
Next item on the agenda. Mr. Dorothy, do we need to wait for you to catch up, or you good? Good? Okay. Four point eight, Resolution 1118-1944 Preliminary Approval of the Issuance of Twenty-Five Million Dollars in Sales Tax Revenue Bonds and Appointment of Municipal Advisor.
Mr. President, I move that the board direct the Finance Committee to discuss and give a recommendation on the use of current and future funding for campus facility renovations.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. I don't have it to read yet, but basically to refer this resolution to committee. Alright, so the motion and a second to refer the resolution for the preliminary approval of the issuance of Twenty-Five Million Dollar Sales Tax Revenue Bonds and Appointment of Municipal Advisor to the Finance Committee for further discussion. This time, I'd like to open up to public comment. Does anyone have a public comment on us referring this to the Finance Committee? Alright, any board member comment? Mr. Santani?
Just give the explanation here, we, um, I think need to have a, a, a larger discussion about, uh, how we wanna, it, how we want to approach the next year and a half or, or fourteen months of our term, given the money that we have, uh, currently to issue bonds and how we want to, um, take into account any future monies that may be spent. So I think that's a better, a discussion better had in a committee that can then present one or more recommendations to the board as to what they find out.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Hidalgo.
Mr. Guidry, uh, is there any reason why sending this to committee would, uh, be a bad idea? Are there any deadlines or any of the such?
Uh, no, uh, all that, that would do would, uh, would be to push back the, the, if, if the board brought to approve a bond sale, it, it would just, uh, push back the date of the bond sale.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, sorry, um, Madam Secretary, I call for the vote.
Seven, four, men against.
Next item on the agenda, four fourteen, Bond Project Listing for Series Twenty-Nineteen Sales Tax Revenue Bonds. Mr. McGee pulled this for me. And I believe Mr. Santani has a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves the Bond Project Listing for the Series Twenty-Nineteen Sales Tax Revenue Bonds with the addition, E.D.I.T.I.O.N. of item number one, dollar amount going to one point two-five million, and item number two, dollar amount going to nine hundred thousand.
We have a motion by Mr. Santani and a second by Mr. Angel to approve the project list for the bond sale with changing the Como High School total to one point two-five million and Acadian High Schools to nine hundred thousand. And this still is to accommodate the, uh, just, I'll explain it. Uh, this is to accommodate the new facilities for NJ ROTC programs. We have two very robust and successful, we have a Navy and Marine Corps, uh, J.R.T.C. program at Como High School that's been operating out of temporary buildings that are literally falling apart for a very, very long time. And we have another very robust Air Force Junior ROTC program at Acadian High School that is also operating out of facilities that are falling apart. Um, they are in need of permanent facilities, bathrooms, uh, the same, the, the, the kids are having to, you know, change into and out of uniform for drill and their different military classes and, uh, need the proper facilities. And these changes that I just made tonight would include enough of a budget so that they can have their, uh, necessary drill, um, pads that they need. Uh, with that, I'd like to open it up to public comment. So the public comment, uh, is on the listing of projects with the motion changes. And I don't know if we have that list, uh, posted, I can go over it briefly. As I mentioned before, number one is Como High School at one point two-five million, uh, with the change in the motion. Number two is Acadian High School, uh, Air Force J.R.T.C. program for nine hundred thousand. These are for facilities, construction. So this is getting rid of temporary buildings, one of the goals that we set several years ago in building permanent facilities. Number three, LJ Alamo replaced twenty-six temporary classrooms, uh, that total and, and some other things for eight point five. Edgar Martin Wing Edition, replacing ten temporary classrooms for three point two-five million. Uh, safety assessment projects, uh, this is basically to identify safety improvements to harden some of our schools and improve the safety of our schools based off recommendations as a safety consultant. Um, two point four-five million. The total estimated cost before contingency is sixteen point two million, but we added, uh, ninety thousand plus sixty thousand, we added another hundred and fifty thousand to that. So it'll be sixteen point three-five million dollars, uh, with another project contingency of one point eight, um, bringing the total estimated project cost, and I'm doing this math in my head to around eighteen million, three hundred thousand dollars. So that is now open for public comment, if anyone has any comment on those proposed construction projects, huh? Alright, any board member comment on these proposed construction projects? Madam Secretary, call.
Six, four, men against.
Next to my item on the agenda, four point one-five, Resolution 1118-1946 Industrial Tax Exemption Application 2016-1904 I.T.E., Staller Inc.
Mr. President, I move that the board defer action on Resolution 11-18-1946.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Santani, second by Mr. Angel to defer Resolution 11-18-1946. Do you have any public comment on the motion to defer? Any board member comment? Madam Secretary, I call for the vote. I think I said vote, but I really want the vote.
Mr. President.
Mr. Angel.
May I take personal privilege?
Yes, sir.
Um, I wanted to, uh, to announce to my, my fellow board members and, and those in the audience, uh, barring the untimely departure of, uh, me on this earth, I intend to remain on this board for at least another year.
We, we appreciate your service and the fact that we get to keep you for another year. Mr. McGee, Mr. Angel's been a politician since I was born. He's been a politician since nineteen seventy-four.
Wow, that's a long time. No offense.
Dr. Chassel.
Six, four, men against.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, four point one-six, Resolution 1118-1947 Industrial Tax Exemption Application 2017-0287 I.T.E., Advanced Product and Systems Inc.
Mr. President, I move that the board defer action on Resolution 11-18-1947.
A motion by Mr. Santani and a second by Mr. Hidalgo to defer Resolution 1118-1947. Do, we have any public comment on the motion to defer? Any board member comment? Madam Secretary, I call for the vote.
Five, four, men against.
Motion carries next, and actually the last item on the agenda for tonight is four twenty-one, Policy G.B.K. Employee Discipline. Uh, do we have a motion for?
Mr.
Hold on, I need a motion. Oh yeah, Dr. Aguilar, you asked us to pull it, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I move that the board approve the proposed revisions to Policy G.B.K. Employee Discipline.
Have a motion? A motion by Mr. Hidalgo and a second by Mr. Angel to approve policy, the provisions to Policy G.B.K. Employee Discipline. This time, I'd like to open up to public comment. Ms. Tibode?
Can you hear me, board members? Okay, I'm Suzanne Tibode, Director of Human Resources. Jonathan Cole asked me to, uh, to discuss this policy just a little bit, provide some clarity for our employees. Some of them had some, some concerns because, um, it, uh, affects the, the process in disciplining employees. And I just wanted to assure them that the process will remain as it has, as it has been, will continue the same process. The only reason this policy was being revised is that our council just wanted to improve the language to better align with state law. So there'll still be a process for just conferencing with a, a, an employee for minor infractions and those types of things that was one of their concerns. So I just was gonna, uh, Mr. Cole asked me if I would clarify that on the board floor tonight. So that's why I asked to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Any board member comment on this item? Mr. Santani?
I'm gonna have to, if you will, bear with me for just a second, I have a question that was asked. I read the, the reference statute, either Ms. Boudreaux or Ms. Tibode. It sounded like a joke, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I, I just, I just realized that. Um, and it said that, um, discipline shall, disciplinary actions shall include only suspension without pay, reduction in pay, or involuntary demotion or dismissal. So the question was, does this mean verbal and written discipline are not available to administrators to use in steps of discipline? Do they only have the option of suspension or termination? Is that, is that true? Whether the, I mean, I understand we're changing this to align it with, with the statute, but that's what the statute said.
Ms. Boudreaux, you wanna go ahead?
It just means that those things are not within the definition of discipline in this policy. Because if you read further down, what is required to discipline, for instance, a teacher or the other things pursuant to this policy and state law, for instance, a teacher requires seven-day notice, ten-day notice. Uh, a senior teacher, uh, gets a hearing before they can be disciplined pursuant to this policy. So, let's say a written, uh, a written reprimand, um, it, it doesn't, it's not a loss of pay basically is, is the essence of what discipline means, a loss of pay or, uh, demotion.
So there are other steps before?
Right, it's just a discipline, uh, pursuant to this policy that requires some sort of process.
I understand.
For certain categories of employees.
Any other board member comment on this item? Madam Secretary, I call for the vote.
Six, four, men against.
Before we adjourn tonight, Mr. Hidalgo is asked for a moment to address you.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, fellow board members, Dr. Aguilar. I wanna thank you all very much for allowing Colin to be here with us tonight. It was an awesome experience for us, I hope it was for you too. Colin, you're a very, very resilient young man and I wanna thank you for being here. And I wanna thank your mother, Amy, for, for bringing you tonight. You're always welcome back, um, to our school board meetings. Uh, keep up the good work, we wish you all the best, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our business tonight. And, uh, Mr. McGee is gonna adjourn the meeting. Just slap it once. Thank you, good night.
That was fun. Meeting adjourned. This will not be the, this will not be the last time you see me.